All right, with that, I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021. All Planning Board members are appearing remotely and the meeting is being recorded. If, for whatever reason, we can't finish tonight's meeting, anything unfinished will be administratively continued to our next meeting on Tuesday, March 16th. So before we dive in, is there anyone here who would like to speak to anything that is not on the agenda for tonight? Everyone will have a chance to participate in the discussion about agenda items, but does anyone have anything not on the agenda tonight they'd like to discuss? You can raise your Zoom hand or turn on your camera and raise your virtual hand. Or star six on your phone, star nine on your phone and ask to address us. Seeing nothing. All right. We've got some Planning Board minutes to approve. First up, the meeting minutes for January 19th, 2021. We're going to have a chance to look at those. I only had, I only had one revision on that. I just wanted to make sure the minutes noted. For the Palmer paving and the High Five Inc., when it says that the vote, all in favor, if we can just put a note in that says that I was recused on those matters, that would be helpful. But other than that, I had nothing.
Yeah, I can do that.
All right, you were here. My apologies.
Yeah, I'm here.
Thanks, Zoe.
I motion to approve the minutes would be amended modification requested for January 19th, 2021.
Seconded.
All right, to approve the January 19th minutes, James.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
Austin.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
And I am an I. Moving right along to the minutes for February 2nd, 2021. And my only thing again was I think there was another mention of High Five Inc. And if you could just, I was, you did know I was recused in the comment or in the description. But if we just put it in the vote, so it's clear, that would be helpful.
I motion to approve the minutes for February 2nd, 2021 with the amended modification.
Seconded.
All right, to approve the February 2nd minutes, Jim.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
Austin.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
And I am an I. And finally, minutes from our February 16th meeting, to which I have no revisions.
I motion to approve the minutes from February 16th.
Seconded.
All right, voting to approve the February 16th minutes, Jim.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
Austin.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
And I am an I again. All right, moving right along to our continued public hearing for American Dream Realty LLC. Let's see, Jessica's here. Jessica, do you want to update us on where we are now or someone else from the team?
I'd love to. Jessica Allen, permitting project manager with our Levec Associates. Also on the line tonight, we have Rob Levec and Jeff Bandini from McMahon Associates. So as of our last meeting in December, the project team met with several members of District 2 MAST DOT to discuss a traffic, traffic signal at the intersection of Route 5 and East Street. Based on that discussion, they had recommended and requested that a memo be sent to the district that incorporated all of the data or a good summary of the data of what has been presented to the Planning Board and has been peer reviewed. In addition, to provide a signal design for the proposed intersection signal, which has been provided to you. So that memo was provided to the board in advance of this meeting. Since then, we had, and that was submitted on February 8th, we had correspondence back from MAST DOT on February 18th indicating that they are, they are in favor of moving forward with a traffic signal design. And the applicant should be able to do that, no problem. But that we would need to file a highway access permit in order to fully kick off the, the process. Jeff can speak to sort of the MAST DOT process and my understanding, based on conversations with McMahon, is that the MAST DOT highway access permitting process can take anywhere from nine to 12 months for a full design process. And so where that leaves us tonight is, is that, as you saw in the cover letter, we're willing to have a condition that ties the traffic signal to the development with an understanding that it would be potentially tied to a certificate of occupancy and so that the projects could work in parallel, since the MAST DOT process does take a considerable amount of time. But I can open it up to the board for any questions on what was provided, which was the, the memo from McMahon that went to MAST DOT, MAST DOT's response, and the cover letter that summarizes both. And Jeff is here to answer any questions that you might have on any of the information provided.
I was going to ask Jeff if he can walk us through the design of the signal, but, and the intersection, but if people have questions for Jessica first, we could do that. All right, so Jeff, are you comfortable walking us through the, I know there's a drawing and a memo and if you can walk us through sort of what you guys are envisioning?
Yes, thank you. And again, for the record, Jeff Bandini. So at the request of District 2, we did put preliminary design for the company on memo that again, went along with a lot of the material and calculations and data collection that we have previously submitted to the board. So this, I just want to stress that, again, this does have to go through the design process with MAST DOT, but it was at their request that they give us a preliminary sketch and layout of what the signal posts, where those would be located, pedestrian accommodations, if there was any modifications to those, and also providing some level of signal timing to accompany that to kind of kick off that design process with respect to, you know, our coordination with MAST DOT in order to get this thing permitted and constructed.
Jim?
I wonder, and just to confirm, you helped with the traffic study. That's what you do?
Yes.
And, you know, I looked at that traffic study and it looked overall good to me. I'd like to just kind of, if it's okay with you, I wonder if you could pull it up and kind of walk us through some of the charts. Specifically, the charts that talk about the number of turns and how they change. I saw we went from an F, as we discussed earlier, in the current situation, to a D with this possible design, with this design if it goes through. And of course, the, the ones that were more on the A, you know, there's no stoppage for, for the North Hampton to Holyoke traffic. Those, of course, go down because now with a stoplight, they slow down. I wonder, and it showed kind of the timing and delay on that that I showed. Can we just walk through that and kind of show the public? I don't know if you can.
Yeah, sure. Permission to share and we can walk through it.
I think I made you co-host, so you should have that access to share.
Perfect. Yeah, I just want to run that by you just to, for clearances. So again, this, this memo is dated February 8th. So this, this runs through a lot of what we had already submitted to the board, but for sake, I'll just kind of walk through it. So just a description of the project, you know, proposed plan set, latest design.
Jeff, I don't know if it's just me, but your audio seems to be cutting in and out.
Okay. If I can get closer.
Yeah, I can't hear that.
Sorry, I'll try to get closer to the microphone if that helps.
Better now.
That sounds good.
Okay, great. So description of the intersection, right now, it's, you know, T-type intersection, East Street's under stop control. And again, there's no, there's no control for Route 5. It operates freely, you know, which we can touch on when, you know, assessing the amount of delays. So we did do a traffic study and again, a lot of this is predicated on that in terms of, you know, what we outlaid in the table one here shows what we had included as the build condition, you know, without putting in a traffic signal, without that installation, we found that, you know, the eastbound queue would be, you know, challenging from the state, from the city standpoint and also from an access management standpoint with respect to the site. So installing that signal at that location of East Street and Route 5 would certainly improve operations at the intersection for that eastbound, that eastbound approach, you know, dropping that 95% out queue from over 1,000 feet to under 1,000 feet and is a little bit more manageable from an average delay standpoint. And overall, providing a level of service D on an A through F scale, D being, you know, acceptable in an urban or suburban environment. So we feel that the, the signalized approach to the intersection would certainly improve operations. And again, in the afternoon, looking about the same, that same level of service D. And again, with queues that are a little bit more manageable during the afternoon, again, partly contributing to the fact that the Duncan would not generate as much traffic during the afternoon period. And that's also reflective of the existing comp data there as well. So we just provided a conclusion that the intersection would be improved by, you know, installing the traffic signal at this location. And again, we provided that backup information. And again, just wanted to show that conceptual signal design plan that we submitted. Again, it essentially keeps same curb layouts that are out there and existing, you know, for the folks at home and for the board, the site is located, you know, slightly off the page down here. So no changes to the existing curb layout. We would just basically be installing a mast arm with proposed signal heads, giving the indication for both for 5 and E Street, installation of the cabinet and service connection. And again, keeping with those pedestrian accommodations along the west side of Route 5, putting in the accommodations for an exclusive pedestrian phase to run concurrently with the northbound, southbound phase, if so requested by the city in MAST DOT to kind of, you know, move operations along from that perspective. But again, it's, it's a simple three-phase system, you know, Route 5 running on one phase, E Street running on the other, and then again, the exclusive pedestrian phase is the third phase. So again, this is very much a preliminary design sketch. We would certainly need to, you know, vet this properly with MAST DOT in terms of what they would want to see in, in terms of making sure the signal placements are, are up to design standards. We feel this is a good kickoff to the conversation with them and, you know, is, you know, ready to proceed to that next, that next phase.
Jim?
Thank you very much. I, I just wonder if you could reiterate one point. You did say the design is preliminary. And I'm sure the numbers therefore that are shown kind of are too. You've done your best with, I'm guessing, how, you know, what data you had available. Can you just reiterate, and, and there was a brief time you broke up, we heard, I think most of it, just in case I missed it. Reiterate how you came to the numbers that you have there?
Specific traffic numbers?
Yes, I, like, what, how did, what went into that calculation? Like, how accurate is it?
Well, those numbers were collected as part of the traffic study, which was done pre-COVID. So those numbers, you know, by essence, represent an average condition. You know, we didn't, we, you know, as part of the Planning Board process, we did collect follow-up data to kind of compare that data. And, and the numbers that we're using as part of this evaluation are, are again, pre-COVID and they represent the most conservative condition that would represent this design.
And with regard to how you came to the, the change to a D and came, and, you know, the knowledge that it would become a D, like, what did that mean?
Correct. Yeah. So what we did was we, we went ahead and, and, you know, used the, the analysis software and timed the, you know, exit, the proposed phases accordingly, based on the amount of traffic per approach and also the exclusive pedestrian phase to make sure that, you know, the pedestrian walk time and clearance time meets the manual and uniform traffic control device standard for pedestrian walking speed to make sure that, you know, pedestrians along the west side of, of Route 5 have, you know, adequate accommodations to, you know, reach their destination. So this is based on our engineering evaluation of the traffic volumes, both the East Street and Route 5, not only the through volumes, but the turning volumes as well.
Thank you.
Jeff, can you walk through sort of the process with MAST DOT and how this kind of a project gets approved and then ultimately implemented? And I'm, I'm particularly curious about sort of when there's like a point of no return where it's going to happen. Because I think we talked at the last meeting with the applicant that, you know, obviously, obviously, the applicant doesn't want to spend money on the intersection and then have to come back and get approved for a special permit. And from the city's perspective, or at least mine, I mean, I'm wary about having work done on site, including like demo work of a, what is historic structure, at least, you know, too far in the process before we know that everything is going to happen. So can you sort of walk through the timeline and also sort of think about when, when we're at a point of no return and we can all be assured that that will happen?
Right. So that's why we wanted to have that preliminary discussion with MAST DOT and the District 2, you know, traffic engineer did indicate that this, you know, the first thing is that this, that this signal is warranted. I mean, that, that's, that's the first part of this evaluation. And we did include that as part of our, you know, traffic study process to look to see if a traffic signal is warranted here. MAST DOT does, you know, go one or even maybe even two steps beyond what the MUTCD, which I just referenced for the pedestrian crossing timing, considers for a traffic signal, you know, the remaining three volume base traffic signal warrants, one being the peak hour, the second being an evaluation of a four-hour warrant, and the other being an evaluation of an eight-hour period, which, you know, we ran as part of this and it was met. So that, that's the highest criteria of all the three. So MAST DOT essentially requires that to be met in order to move forward with the signal. So giving them the traffic study and this data and presenting this preliminary sketch and the traffic study in this memorandum essentially lets them know that we're in the, we're in the, in the, in the fast lane to get this thing, to get this thing going in terms of providing this, the implementation of this signal. So what we would need going forward is just some sort of evaluation beyond what we've included here in terms of, you know, utilities and connections and, you know, a full design that, that looks at, you know, you know, connectivity and takes into account bicycle accommodations, which are, which are already, you know, existing along Route 5. And, you know, is the level of service that we presented in this table acceptable? And we have to go through that, you know, MAST DOT permitting phase that Jessica mentioned in order to get this thing built. So I, I think we're already on pretty much the fast track to get this thing approved. So I, you know, it, it takes some time and, and I don't want it to make it seem like the time that Jessica outlined is, is, you know, nine to 12 months. That's just the, the phase to go back and forth with the design process. That's not to say that it can either happen or not happen. They, they've essentially told us that it can happen as long as the project team and the city is committed to moving this design forward. So, you know, it does take time for the, for MAST DOT to review. They have to review all the equipment that we're specifying. Again, this is just a, a, a design that, that shows some of these, we have to, we have to account for what kind of signal heads are included here. We have to account for what type of controller, what kind of cabinet, what kind of wiring, and some of the major items that are required. And, and we haven't done that as part of this preliminary evaluation. But as we move forward in the process, that's something that we would need to include in order to receive the MAST DOT permit. And the other thing to consider is the, the procurement of the materials to construct this. You know, we need to put in the proper orders for the mast arm and the, and the controller and also the, the traffic signal heads and make sure that we get a contractor on board that is, you know, ready to put this thing out to bid as well. But, you know, to answer, largely answer your question, this thing is already, you know, it, we've already done multiple steps to get this thing moving forward. So, you know, we look forward to, you know, hearing some additional feedback from the board. And if there's any additional questions that we need to take and we need to run by MAST DOT to make sure that we have those assurances, we can certainly do that.
I guess my question, Jeff, is when we get to the point, I mean, when there's a point where we've sort of all the, I mean, you don't have to have state funding here, which is obviously one of the biggest hurdles on sort of the MAST DOT projects, right? So that's out the window, but like, what steps need to be taken where no one can really stop this anymore, right? So, I mean, at this point, it sounds like MAST DOT has more or less said, you know, in general, we support this concept. We may want to tweak it a little bit, but as long as you've got the funds and you can find a contractor who'll do it, it can happen. And so I'm curious about like how far into the process we have to get before we have a contractor lined up and can set aside funds and that kind of thing to make sure that everything is in place, that this project will happen.
Right. And as Jessica mentioned, where, you know, what we're striving for is just, you know, that this intersection be constructed until we get an occupancy permit. And, you know, again, like I said, these things take time. So you want to, if possible, run these concurrent with the site work and, you know, moving forward with the signal. So as far as the point of no return, certainly we would, you know, be open to any sort of conditions that the board would put in place in terms of being able to, you know, move forward with the signal as far as the site approval goes. As far as like a timeline goes, you know, we're working within, you know, MAST DOT timeframe in order to, you know, review this process. So, you know, with the board's approval, we would like to, to kind of move that forward, knowing that we have certain conditions for the site to be constructed as, as proposed.
Jeff, do you have a comment or question?
I have a question, I guess. Would there be a point in the MAST DOT design phase, the nine to 12 months, that you would get a cost estimate from, for the project? I think that that's a concern that I would have is after going back and forth with MAST DOT and they may, may or may not ask for certain features to be included. I think to Jesse's question about make it or break it or on point of no return, I think we need some kind of assurance to get to a certain stage that this is financially feasible before construction is going to start. So it's, we have a lot of discussion, discussing of mechanics once, once we, if we get there. But do you know if there's a point in, in time in the design phase that you would have a cost estimate in hand? Or when, when would you determine the cost for this? I can't, I can't imagine that it's an endless feasible feasibility project if, if the costs go high or something. I'm just trying to understand when you would know how much it would cost.
And that's part of the, that's part of the evaluation as well. We could certainly put together a cost estimate that accompanies this level of design. But in terms of, you know, certain requests that MAST DOT would make, you know, that's probably somewhere in the, you know, I would say, you know, three to six month phase in terms of trying to figure out exactly how we want to include all this, you know, the controller type and the mast arms and all that. Those are the, and, and, you know, if, if, if MAST DOT required any sort of, you know, resurfacing as part of this, those, those would be the three things that would drive the cost, the highest on this project. So that, I would say probably in the three to six month phase, we would have a pretty good idea of what that is in terms of, you know, pushing forward. And then, you know, the rest of that would be securing the permit and getting the final design lockdown and then moving on to the, the contractor and the, and the construction phase. So I'd say probably in the three to six month range.
Jeff, if I could, if I could kind of chime in and tag on to that, Rob Levec. The, I think framing the question is important. I think the question is important. I think it's important for the city. But I think we need to understand, I think the city might be getting a little bit into the weeds here with regard to the signal itself. Obviously, this is a jurisdictional roadway. We have to go through the MAST DOT process. I think the last discussion that we had, the Planning Board was, okay, does MAST DOT think that a light is warranted here? I think we've answered that question, which is good. We've also had some preliminary discussions with regard to cost. And actually, I think the costs are going to be, generally speaking, less than we originally anticipated. So we think that's another good thing. So like Jeff said, it might take a few months to vet that. But really, what we're looking to do is get the, the project moved forward at a local level, knowing that, okay, MAST DOT agrees that, you know, based on all the traffic work that's been done by McMahon Associates, peer reviewed by Fuss and O'Neil, that, and then, and then vetted with MAST DOT, that MAST DOT arguably agrees that this is a, you know, a, a positive thing in a project that they can wrap their minds around. And then it's just a matter of us executing. So we anticipate that that will obviously cost money and take time. But we, as Jeff had mentioned, you know, our approach in doing this is, is to, is to kind of clarify for the, for the board that, you know, if a special permit is granted and we don't perform or for some reason the, the light doesn't get designed and constructed, that there's no, there's no store. And I, we want to make that very clear. We understand that. And if, if for some reason, you know, for all the reasons that you brought up, which are all good questions and all good reasons, if the light doesn't happen, the store doesn't happen. So I think once we get to a point, you know, or let's just say we get local approval, we get a special permit, we move forward with MAST DOT, four months down the road, we find out it's going to cost $3 million more than we thought, right? That's not the case, but the reality is something could happen. There could be eventualities. And then the special permit cannot be acted upon because we decide we, you know, it's just too infeasible. So I think the board can rest easy that we are more than comfortable and understand that this project won't happen without the signal. And, you know, and rest easy that the state will be reviewing this specifically. You know, very detailed design and construction, proposed construction with McMahon and the applicant. So we know we're early on in the MAST DOT stages, but as Jeff had mentioned, it's warranted. We know we have to do it. We're willing to sign on for that. How that gets paid for and, and, you know, and all that, we will certainly be on the applicant to figure that out. And we'll, you know, we'll ideally move forward and we'll get to a point, based on the preliminary estimates that we have, that this, you know, and this ideally will be feasible when we're done with those estimates. And then when it goes to construction, hopefully those estimates don't get changed. Generally speaking, we're actually anticipating that this will be slightly less than we initially had talked about. So, you know, respectfully, what we would like to do, if possible, is have the board, you know, assuming you're comfortable with all the other aspects, or if there's anything that needs to be addressed, look at those and ideally vote based on the project itself with the understanding that the project won't happen without the light, whatever conditions you feel the need or however you feel the need to craft your decision so that that's, you know, very clear. We understand that and, you know, we're, that's acceptable to, to the team. Thank you.
Yeah, Rob, that's helpful. So I think you and I talked about this the last meeting. I mean, and I don't want, I mean, we're trying to craft this, so you guys obviously don't have to come back or, or sort of expose yourself to any risk where we're going to build a signal and then knock it to have our store. And obviously, we don't want to do that, right? And so then the flip side of that is, I'm personally at least nervous about the sort of concurrent project. If there's still a chance that the light might fall apart or even the project, right? So let's just say you look around, you don't have funds. So, I, I mean, your perfect world is we, you know, vote on a special permit right now and let you start work right now while this is going forward. I mean, my perfect world would be as soon as you can turn on the light, then you can start work on the site. But what I'm trying to find is something in the middle where it's past the point of no return where we sort of, we, we have comfort level that, I mean, the design itself, to me, I have complete confidence that MAST DOT will do a better job reviewing this signal intersection than any of us will. Like, that's not my concern. It's more, is there an acceptable level of risk that this project isn't going to fall through? And we've demoed a building or we've, you know, started work on site and then it just sits there. So that's more what I'm trying to get at when I was asking Jeff those questions is sort of, when, when do we know that like, you know, there's money set aside? Maybe it's an escrow or there's a bond or something. We've, we've got an idea of what that cost is.
That makes perfect sense. What if, Jeff, is there a way to, you know, maybe if they, the Planning Board was to have a decision tied to funding? So, you know, we talked about the design, right? And then we'll have a cost estimate associated with that design. And at some point, the project needs to be funded, right? So let's just say that's six or eight months down the road, that the project gets funded, whatever way that the applicant is, is able to handle that. After which point, like, you know, the chair said, everybody's comfortable that it's been funded. You know, Duncan can start with their project because we know it's, the money set aside, things get funded. To me, that's actually a very, very good point and to me is, is logical. And then it would still, I would think, Jeff, give us a little bit of time because these Dunkins go up pretty quick, believe it or not. So, you know, depending on how light, long the signal took, and I know that there's some, a lot of lead time with the mast arms and some of the, some of the signals themselves. What would you anticipate from funding to completion of the light? What, Jeff, if you had to give a, a wild guess, what would you say? Per timeframe?
Timeframe from funding to full construction and operation?
Yep.
I would probably say the, you know, in the nine to 12 month category, my guess.
So once it's funded, we would have plenty of time to get the Duncan started. It might not, might not even start it right away, depending on the seasons and everything. A typical Duncan build that I've seen, they can happen as quick as five months. Manny might even tell you sooner. I've seen, we've done quite a few. So to give you some perspective.
So Rob, that, that's like exactly what I'm envisioning is sort of, we know, so maybe the condition that we put in here is not only that this gets a signalized intersection, you know, per DOT approval and in substantial accordance with these plans or something like that, but that, you know, no work is done on the site unless and until there's a certified funding estimate and that the funds have been set aside to cover the cost or something like that. And then, then we know the project's been approved, the money's been set aside, it's going to happen. And so now it's not as big a deal if you guys start work on site. That's what I'm trying to find is where that sweet spot is.
Agreed. Understood.
Any other questions or comments from Planning Board members? Any other questions or comments from planning board members? Harry?
Yeah, what, what was the, uh, proposed delay at that stop sign down there, uh, five years from now? Wasn't that about five or six minutes or something like that? Remember correctly?
Sorry, what was the question?
Was there a proposed five or six minute wait at that stop sign down there about four or five years from now?
Yeah, in the, in the build condition, and this is reflected in, in the analysis table that we.
Well, you would tell you, you, I want you to explain to me how a stoplight. Is going to stop a six minute delay at that, at that corner down there. How is that possible? Just explain it to me. How is that going to work?
Well, the, the signal will provide the necessary, the necessary gaps for. Um, you know, the East Street approach. They won't have to, you know, come to the stop sign, look left, look right. And then go upon, you know, a gap that they deem necessary. They'll, the light, you know, every 30 to 45 seconds, you know, east, the east street traffic will get to process and. That really drives down the, the, the process wait time for the East Street approach.
So you're telling me there's only going to be a 35 to 40 second change between the lights between going off at East Street and coming down the north, south, uh, Route 5?
That demonstrates an average delay. Right now, all the, all of the delay is, is geared towards the East Street side because that's under stop control. But what, what the analysis model tells us when it's, when it's signaled, there'll obviously be some delay. That shifts to the north and southbound approaches in order to let the East Street process. So what it does is it takes an average. For all the vehicles and it puts it in, it puts it together. So there'll be some delay still for East Street, but there'll be some contributing delay from the north and southbound approaches. So. When you kind of put that all together, it, it ends up being a, a net positive for, for installing the signal.
All right. The other question I have is, uh. There's a proposed Dunkin Donuts being built up there by the, uh, up on the top of the mountain and, uh. How would that affect a Dunkin Donuts down on East Street if they built one up there on the mountain? How would that happen?
Uh, I can speak.
Take away from the business?
I'm, I'm involved. Yeah. So Rob Levesque again, I'm in, I'm involved in, in that one as well. Um, you know, we've, we've seen, yeah, that, that will happen a little bit. Um, Dunkin Donuts corporate typically will, um. You know, not want stores within a certain distance of each other or certain traffic patterns. Uh, but that, that is, I've been identified as a location for a different franchisee. Um, and, um, you know, it's arguably that will capture traffic. Coming from East Hampton in the morning over the hill of the Holyoke, folks that are getting, maybe getting on 91 or heading over to South Hadley or Holyoke. Um, that's generally the traffic pattern that that one's capturing. Um, this area, as you're aware, through the traffic study and all the other general regional movement that you're aware of, just by living in East Hampton. Uh, this is a different area that we're capturing. So, um, I would, you know, I would expect that, you know, it could cannibalize a tiny bit of business, but generally speaking. Duncan corporate and these franchisees do a lot of study before they even look at a location. Um, there's a lot of data that's available. Um, and a lot of software that follows cell phone data and lets us know where people are going in general. So, long story short. That one is a different approach, uh, different, capturing different folks.
Well, that's going to put about, uh, six Dunkin Donuts within, within about a three mile radius.
You better drink.
Isn't that a little bit oversaturated in the neck?
Uh, I guess people keep buying it.
Yeah.
I don't know. Yeah. I, uh, you know, there are, there are quite a few and they're, they're a very successful franchise, New England based and. Um, I think, I think, uh, we all go there quite a bit. So I don't know if you do, but I'm there every day.
Any other questions from planning board members? Uh, Jeff Bag, yeah?
Thanks. I didn't realize I'm not a planning board member, but, um. In your, um, I guess this is a question to the applicant, if that's okay. Um, in your discussions with mass DOT, did they talk to you about? The project that they have planned in the vicinity. Um, they are, they are looking at a project that would potentially connect or at least. Relate in some way to this intersection. Did, did they indicate any information to you about another project that? They, um, they're in discussion about installing a, uh, s- um, separated bike path. That would go from the man hand rail trail, um, terminus on, on Route 5 to North Hampton. Um, so I'm just kind of curious because there, there are some potential. You know, there's some potential to work with mass DOT on that project. Um, they need. They need to incorporate a way to get, um, bicycles from one side of Route 5 to, to the rail trail side. So I'm just, I just wanted to know from your perspective. You know, whether you'd be, you, you, I think you'd be, there would be some expectation that you might work with them on, and if there's a way to. Combine the two projects that light would benefit the mass DOT project. Um, to allow the potential for bicycles to go from the riverside over to the rail trail side. I, I just curious if they discuss that with you.
Uh, yes, they did. And, and we've, we've known about that project for quite some time as we, as we've gone through the app, application process here. And we, we went so far as to gauge, you know, math, interest in extending their project. To include the intersection, uh, of East and Route 5, but for funding purposes, they were not able to. They were not able to extend that on their own volition. So, uh, you know, we do anticipate, you know, we did have discussions with us, you see that we would have some sort of coordination between the two efforts. Um, to what level that is, um, we haven't really gone to the extent of that. Or even tried to, you know, line up the, you know, constructibility of the two, but we understand that that project. Is under the design process. So we want to have some, and I'm sure it, as far as our interest goes in S U T. Their interest goes as well. We would, there would be some sort of, you know, benefit to connecting those two projects in order to kind of. You know, fulfill the needs of, of all of the stakeholders being, you know, the rail trail users and us in, in the city as well.
Thanks. That's helpful to know that that, that came up in your, um, discussions with them.
It did, yes.
Um, Jessica or Rob, I guess. I'm not sure. We got, uh, email forwarded to us this afternoon from a couple of butters that we've heard from about some mitigation measures. Do you guys had a chance to look at that?
Yes.
And then, uh, I guess, uh, I'll, I'll set aside the driveway movement thing for now, but I'm curious as to the, um. Shrubs fencing and the no, you know, not blocking the driveway signage on both of these parcels. Uh, uh, do you have ideas about how you can make that work?
I think the suggestions that were, uh, provided are, are logical and, and reasonable. Um, it didn't seem like it was too much to ask. Um, for those items, I think, you know, we all know that there are reasons why moving the driveway don't make, you know, would reduce stacking and a number of other factors, but. The, uh, the other items seemed pretty reasonable to me. I, you know, I didn't see anything crazy in there.
Okay, that, that seemed, I seemed to feel the same way when I was looking at those. I, I'm curious about the driveway. I know we talked about the driveway location earlier in the process. Um, and now we have a signalized intersection in this fantasy world that this is all happening in. And so, um, which probably both, um. Maybe it makes moving the driveway more possible, but also maybe reduces the stacking that might be the problem that the butter was having anyways. But I'm curious if you, if you were able, and I realized you probably got this email two hours ago. So, uh, um, but like, if you have any thoughts and maybe this is a Jeff question instead, as far as how. The driveway movement might change that I realize it probably throws off a lot of our other data that we have as far as site distances and things like that. So. I, I'm just curious what your thoughts are about that from, at least from 30,000 feet, thinking about it right now.
I can talk about the site circulation, then maybe Jeff could talk about the traffic piece, but so as far as site circulation goes. Um, we really strive to, uh, do our best to provide as much stacking as possible or queuing for the, for the drive through lane. Um, starting the entrance on the left side as you go in or call that the west, uh, south side, west side. Anyway, the left side plan left, um, allows us to take the opportunity to not only create probably. I'm going to say probably eight more, maybe eight, you know, eight or nine more stacking spaces should we need them? We don't anticipate hopefully that we'll need them. But you, you, we've really looked hard at this site. All these sites are generally not the biggest sites in the world. And we look hard. At separating, and I think I mentioned this in the, through the process, at separating the parking from the drive through lane. That's the key to success with these, with these facilities. And you'll see, you'll go through certain, um, restaurants that you'll find that don't have that separation and really don't function the same. So. From a onsite circulation standpoint, not only do we have a really nice, clean entrance for the drive through that's. Pretty much separates people almost immediately. Uh, but it also provides a significant amount of stacking. If we were to shift that entrance. To the middle, so like along the driveline, and I'm not sure who's sharing, but if they, you know, just kind of put their cursor in the middle where those arrows are. Yeah, if, if it went there, what would happen is you'd basically be entering all at the same location where the parking is. Um, and then it would be a tougher movement getting around that corner. Um, and then it would also truncate the amount of stacking that we have in that independent drive through lane. So. Um, while I understand the concern from the neighbor, um, you know, this is a morning, generally a morning type of use. Um, so hopefully the impacts to the neighbors, you know, are, are, are reasonable. Um, and then, you know, I think rather than moving the entrance, if there was some sort of, you know. Minor offsite mitigation or something, you know, that needed to happen, that, that would be, you know, something that would be reasonable. Um, but the, moving the entrance from a site standpoint really would, you know, detract from the overall function, in my opinion.
Well, and I do think that if you're, I mean, it's, that section of the street there is pretty far removed from the actual intersection, which I think could have been a problem with the current. Conditions, but I'm, I'm hoping that this light might actually solve that problem. I'm, I'm curious what kind of screening or fencing, I mean, it, it seems easy to me. Um. I think, uh, Keely Savoy Sexton is the butter on the same side. So that seems like an easy situation to put in fencing and, and screening. But I'm curious if you have any thoughts for how you could screen for the across the street neighbor, which seems a little trickier to me.
I'm going to, um, I don't know, maybe Jeff was already sharing. Jeff, or, or I'll try to bring up Google Earth if it's okay with the board and then we can kind of take a look across the street.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, I just made you co-host. You could do that.
Thank you, sir. Just give me one moment, please. Sorry. And hopefully action. Here we go. Can you folks see the screen?
Yes.
Great. I will try to drop my little person here. I think this, uh, maybe this is the driveway we're talking about, right?
Yep.
Um, so I believe this is the, the property in the driveway. Um, our driveway is coming in right, right about where the, um, this stuff is now. Um, we're going to be right, right in here, probably a little bit to the right where this dumpster currently is. Um, so I guess if people are exiting, they're going to be right across from the driveway. Which probably the best location as opposed to people exiting directly out towards the windows of the house. Um. So I guess, uh, you know, the, the house appears to be a little bit elevated. Um. I'm just looking at my elevation. I got a 126 elevation at the street. And about a 135, so it's about 10, it's about 10 feet higher to the grade in the front of the house and maybe another three or four feet. So if something was proposed, I would assume it would need, need to have some sort of vertical element. I don't know if that's suitable to the folks, but if they're. You know, this tree here in bloom, um, and, you know, with, with, uh, vegetation on it. Um, would probably screen pretty well. So, you know, maybe a few, I think they would be more upright. I don't think low lying shrubs would help a, a lot, but then again. You know, most of the lights I would expect are going to shoot right into the side of the hill here, given the, you know, unless somebody had their high beams on, which is possible. Um, but yeah, I think, you know, I don't know that what the neighbor would prefer. We have not spoken with them, but, um, something. Something a little bit more vertical would probably shield them, but that's just my thought.
Okay, um. I'm curious, actually, uh, now that you mention it, if either Keely or Jane are on this call, they're. I can see Jane's iPad, which I think.
Yeah, you're gonna go.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right.
Hello.
Hello, Jane, how are you?
I'm great. How are you?
Good. So I'm hoping you've been listening to this and I'm wondering if you have any thoughts about what specifically kind of screening you envisioned to sort of help protect that property there?
Well, um. I don't care for arbovites, uh, because it's too close to the road and with the salt. It would damage, the salt from the road, it would damage the arbovites and then they would look terrible. I've seen that happen before. Um, I was. Pretty much thinking, um, maybe some rhododendrons, uh, and just let them grow instead of trimming them down. Um, the large tree, uh, that you're looking at, that maple, that has been removed already. So my, the front of the house is open. Um, as far as that big tree goes. Um, I would like to discuss more about the driveway. There's a telephone pole across the road, which it seemed to be right in the middle of where. Uh, Mr. Levesque said that the driveway would be. What's going to happen with that telephone pole?
Yeah, Jess, can you bring up the plans? I'll, uh, stop sharing. While we're waiting on the plans, um, you know, like a PJ on rhododendron or, you know, rhodies make a lot of sense. They're, they're evergreen and they'll. You know, they will provide pretty good cover. They can get quite large. Um, so that might be a good solution. But, uh, Jess, do you have the plans?
I, I need sharing capability.
Do I have to do something? I think it's Jeff, right?
We should have it now.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah. So on the, uh, layout plan, it's probably the easiest one to show there. Um, so that utility pole is being removed. If you look, uh, right there. So, uh, right where the 40 is? No, 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 right in the middle. Right in the middle of the driveway. There we go. Right there. Yep. So that's being removed, ma'am.
Okay.
So Jane, what, what we were talking about with the driveway is we're, we're hoping that if this traffic light goes in, that the traffic won't back up. On the East Street by your house, the way that it has been, or even, even now, I think so. Uh, I'm hoping that that will solve that problem. So what I'm really thinking about is what we were talking about is sort of how to mitigate. The noise and light coming from the cars going in and out that I think will shine right into your living room. So.
Right. Yeah. That's a big concern also.
And y- y- you would prefer the plantings to any sort of fence or something like that, Jane?
Um. I'm thinking that that would make a better appearance than, than just putting a fence down there where the, uh, the rest of, of East Street is basically open. Um, they don't have fencing right in the front of their house.
Yep.
And I, that's my thought.
How do we get out of our driveway?
And how, yeah, also I, it depends on how long. Um, I hope I can explain myself. The traffic light would switch. As to how many cars are going to be backed up so that I could get in and out of my driveway.
Yeah, Jeff, so, so if we look at this hypothetical world, Jeff Bandini, I, I don't know how far we can extrapolate this, but I'm thinking, you know. When we look at that sort of worst time of day, the peak hours for people that are backed up there and add that traffic into the signalized intersection. Can we sort of figure out how many cars might stack up there at like the worst time of day? To see, it, it seems like it's a pretty good stretch of distance that I know it gets backed up that far right now to Jane's driveway, but. Um, because I've, I've been backed up that far before over there, but I'm, and I'm curious sort of if we have the cycle that. And I realize that you don't know what the actual cycle would be when it's approved, but if there's a way to sort of extrapolate and kind of guess at what that would be.
So I just need to switch over. I was looking at the, can you mind if I pull up the analysis table that we, that we use? Okay, um, so again, I'll, I'll refer back to the, the memorandum that we. Uh, submitted to mass DOT as part of our evaluation. So this, this column right here where this is 95th. So that's the evaluation of the 95th percentile queue. So if you look all the way to the right here under the 2027 build signal. So if you look all the way to the right here under the 2027 build signal scenario, gives us a preliminary estimate of, of what queue would be, uh, linked to as far as the signal timing. So in the morning, we, we had predicted under the non-signalized scenario to be a little over a thousand. And then out of the build scenario to be around 800 feet. So it is a, it is a, you know, drastic improvement in terms of not only operations, which I discussed, but also queue. And then the PM paint disc would be, you know, around 550. Now, I want to just stress a couple of things with this. So this is 85th percent, this is 95th percentile. So this is during the highest peak hour of the day, 95% of the time, it's not going to be beyond this. So this is like an absolute worst case scenario.
It's like a worst case scenario of a worst case scenario.
And I'll, I'll even do you one better. So this evaluation, we had some discussions a few meetings ago about the complexity with respect to how sensitive the model is with, uh, you know, evaluating the, um, you know, aggression of the drivers and the gap acceptance that we could apply to the build condition, but the same applies to the signalized condition as well, when you have folks going through on yellow lights and, and things like that. It, it takes into account some sort of conservative measurement as far as that goes. So we would expect that even this is the highest of the high, of the highest peak hour in that evaluation. So, you know, most of the time it's going to be far less than that. This is again, only during that probably five minutes of the day. Under a most conservative estimate, would we expect that it would be, you know, as, as far as the model shows us here?
Okay. And do we, do we have a rough idea of how far, how many feet up from that stop line, uh, Jane's driveway is? Can we figure that out from any of the drawings or Google Earth or somebody who's better at estimating from a map than I am?
I want to say it was around possibly, I know Rob's going to pull it up, but I think that's.
Yeah, I think you need to stop sharing, but I, I don't know if we heard the distance that you just said, Jeff. Can you say that one more time?
Uh, I want to say it was around 300 because when we evaluated the site distance in that intersection, we wanted to make sure that we based on what we had.
I'm going to do my best here. All right. So I think I'm good. So soapbox. So this is Jane's driveway here.
Yep.
Do we want to go all the way to the intersection?
Yeah, go all the way to the stop line there.
Looks like 295. Jeff is pretty close.
I really like that.
That is impressive. Thank you.
Am I right that that's, you know, that's your worst case? It goes to 300 and that's when the light is red to them and then it releases and it cuts through, which means that she will be able to pull out waiting for the light essentially. Is that, is that, am I right in that assessment?
Yeah, absolutely. And that's part of the capability of the traffic signals, putting in the, putting in the detection. So it's our aim when we time the signal that entire queue would be able to clear during one cycle. We can, and we can get into the weeds when we, we talked to Massey, it's even a lot of times in situations like this, we'll put in advanced key detection. So not only will they have, will they have, um, equipment at the stop line so that it can detect when a signal is waiting, but it'll have detection in advance so that if the queue gets to a certain space that it will, it will activate that phase ahead of time. So there's certain assurances that we can put in place. You know, if requested that we could even try to, to make the east street operations work even better than the originally.
Well, who, who, sorry, who would make those requests or when would that happen in the process?
That's something we could even put into our design. It's something that, you know, as we get, and we didn't, we didn't determine our detection. Equipment and, uh, you know, evaluation is part of the preliminary design. You know, there's different types of detection. There's, there's video detection and there's also, um, you know, uh, wire loop detection in the pavement. So that's part of what we need to decide with NASTCOT in terms of that evaluation phase. So if, if McMahon is the designer or anyone else that would design this would, would request that we put in advanced key detection, then that's something that we're almost sure, certain that NASTCOT would want to, would want to accept.
I would think the hard thing really wouldn't be, um, the stacking for her to be able to pull in and out, but rather timing, competing with people coming out almost at exactly the other side. I mean, that would probably be the more.
Right.
And again, as part of the, part of the site plan, and, and I know we keep switching back and forth here, but you know, a few meetings ago, we did, we did talk about assurances that we could put in place to kind of mitigate that queue. And we did put in that don't block the box scenario at the driveway there. Uh, we still think that even though, you know, we're moving forward with the signal. It's part of the mitigation of this process, if this project, we still think that that's a suitable mitigation measure for this intersection. Now, given the signal, we don't anticipate that the queue will be back beyond the don't block the box more than it would be before. In fact, it's probably going to be shy of the don't block the box a lot more frequently than it would have been previously. But, um, you know, that has been proved, as a proven measure to help for access management issues for not owning the Duncan driveway, but I'm, I'm fairly certain that that would work. You know, for the driveways on the, for the driveway on the other side as well.
Okay, uh, Jane, any other questions or concerns you want to raise? I mean, I know this isn't ideal. It's not as good as it is not having a Duncan across the street from you, but I'm curious what you think about sort of these solutions and, and, and how you feel about that.
I think that we've touched base on, on, on the, um, my questions that I have. But like, I was also thinking and, and just, uh, think that it got answered at this last time. If I wanted to back out of my driveway and go down to East Hampton Center, how would that, the traffic going into East Hampton, would that be stopped long enough for me? How would I know when I can get in and out of that driveway? If I've got, if I've got traffic backed up going down east street to North Hampton? And I want to go into east, um, into East Hampton, I have traffic coming just the opposite direction.
Jeff, am I wrong in understanding that that, that the signal will create gaps in either direction, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. And that's, that's part of the ancillary benefit of, of not only improving the operations for all of the approaches, but it creates that sort of gap. You know, certainly, you know, when the, we have the change interval, when it changes from the north street, traffic to the east street traffic, there's that all red time. And that two or three seconds or however we time the signal provides that sort of like standstill period where there's no traffic that's moving.
But it's right on red. I, I mean, even right now, anyone comes at any time and it's really sporadic as it is, I'm, I'm guessing. That's a problem that exists currently, but right on red in Massachusetts. So I mean, even the light isn't going to stop people turning up toward East Hampton.
Right.
I mean, it's going to stay the way it is.
Yeah.
And a line coming out of Duncan on us.
And, and, and then we'll have, uh, traffic coming out of Duncan at that time too. It just seems like a big traffic jam to me.
Yeah. I mean, I think there's going to be a lot of traffic there, whether we build this or not. That's sort of part of the problem with that intersection that we've talked about before, right? Is that it's already a pretty tough intersection. So I think we're trying to figure out how best to mitigate that. Jeff Bag, did you have a question?
I did. If, if you don't mind, um, it's for Jane, which is, I, I actually had two questions just for clarification purposes, but, Jane, you had mentioned that the tree, that large maple tree that was in the, uh, Google Earth is gone. Is that something that you, was it, um, a tree that was old and needed to be removed or did you, did you move it on purpose? I was wondering like, you know, in mitigation, the rhododendrons, if I think it would be reasonable for the discussion to include a larger specimen tree, if that was desirable, because I think a specimen tree in the front yard might help some of the, the higher up views. And I just didn't know the nature of why you may have removed that. It could be, it could be that you didn't want it. I just wanted to ask that. And then the other question was, do you currently back, do you currently back out of your driveway on the east street? Is that how you leave your property?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Cause I was just thinking that a turn it like, if, if there was a way that you could turn around, if that would make the situation easier, if you're exiting, you know, forward, leaving out of your driveway. I just wanted to ask those couple of quick questions just for clarification.
The tree, the tree was removed because of age. And how would I, uh, my driveway isn't wide enough for me to really turn around and, and, uh, to go out.
And we have the.
To drive out of it. So that's why I back out.
Yeah, I think it's usually called like a little hammerhead, which is just a little area where you could back down and turn into something and then turn around in the drug, like all on your property. I just didn't know if that would be something worthwhile to think about, to help, help you get out once you're, once you're getting ready to exit.
And who would, who would be paying for that? How would that be funded?
Well, I just think they, I think that's part of, you know, just this kind of discussion about potential mitigation if that, if that would help.
I think in most cases, the town planner, the town planners pay for those.
Out of their salaries. Yeah, Jane, so I think like what we're trying to do here is find ways, because I mean, you definitely have a tough spot here. And so I think that what we're all trying to do is figure out what might make it easier for you. If this project goes forward so that you can still, you know, hopefully not have too much negative impact on your life. So I, I mean, I think the question is, A, would you be interested in another large tree being put in that yard somewhere? And B, would it make it easier if there was a small, you know, cutout that was paved in there so that you could back out and then head out of your driveway forward?
I'm, well, you're asking two different things.
I know. Throwing a lot at you without any preparation.
Right. I don't see, all right. So if I were to have a space to turn around, then I guess that probably would be easier, um, than backing out of the driveway. But I certainly can't afford to have that done. I'm a single person here.
Yep.
As far as a, another tree put in, um, that would be helpful, but that's not going to stop it right, stop the noise like right at the end of, of my property.
Yeah, I think what Jeff was contemplating was still doing the, what we talk about rhododendrons maybe, but then also a tree to help shield some of the light.
That would be.
But so that, so then I guess Rob, looking at these things, sort of the rhododendrons, a tree, a turnaround, like what are you, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Sardini, like what are your thoughts on those as sort of mitigation for Jane's spot?
I, so I think they're all reasonable. I would prefer to have, you know, Mr. Sardini, as you're aware, is, you know, a local guy. He just texted me that that's fine, actually. So, so I was just going to say he's a pretty nice guy, but, um, yeah, I think that proves it. So yeah, you know, I think those items make sense. And Manny, I can tell you, uh, he's a great guy to work for, for us, because he does what he says he's going to do. So, you know, I think, I think these folks will, despite having a, a, a busy business across the street, I think they'll, they'll have a good neighbor for sure.
Okay. All right, Jane. So maybe we can hammer out some details on that, but, but that sounds like it, it should be a pretty good setup for you to hopefully maybe even make it safer for you to get out of your driveway than it is today.
Okay. I, I'm agreeable to that.
Okay. Um, is Keely by any chance there with you or is she?
Uh, no, she was unable to.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, um, so then I guess Rob, looking at her email, what she's talking about, um, this is Keely. And so she's, uh, she's at 15 east street. So I think she's right next door.
Yes.
And so she's requested the maximum height shrubbery and fencing be installed between my property and the site of the proposed Duncan prior to construction to reduce, reduce noise and visual disturbances to my property. And then signs installed at both ingress egress points of my driveway reading, do not block driveway. Does that sound doable from your perspective on that front, Rob?
Uh, yeah, I would think so. Just to clarify, is it this address or is it next door to the Duncan over here?
Oh, the larger, same side as the, same side as the project.
Right here?
No, same side as, uh, the, the proposed project.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
And you could, you can see the sort of horseshoe drive there. I think that's what she's talking about is sort of the ingress and the egress to not.
Yeah, I think we have, I think we have, um, if we don't have the max, what, I don't know what the maximum height fence is, is it?
So we, we, we talked about this in a previous response letter. So there is a six foot fence that's proposed on the property line, which I think, um, is the maximum height that's allowed under the highway business standards, if I remember correctly, that we did talk about the height of the fence. And I think we're as high as we possibly can go under the zoning. I can go back and look at the response letter though.
Okay. And, and I, I think that it, my guess is that there won't be much of a traffic issue on her side of the street there for her driveways, but I think a couple of signs that say not to block the driveway seem like a pretty easy give to solve any problem that might show up. That, that's unreasonable.
Agreed.
Okay.
Is it true that we have the potential to waiver that zoning is a board, uh, for a specific instance, say an eight foot? I mean, we, we have the power to, to do that, right? And the zoning is created for a good reason. Personally, I would hesitate to, to meddle with it at all, but it is true that we have that authority, right?
We do in some contexts and not in others, Jim, and I'm not sure if we do in this situation. Jeff, maybe you know, um.
I'll look it up while we're still on the call, but I think that it is a, in the zoning, it's a, if, if you, you could, someone could apply for a special permit for a taller than six foot fence. So I think it would be fair and acceptable if the board did allow a higher one within this special permit process. I think it covers the same issues. So that would, you know, I think it over eight, I think would, might be a little excessive, but eight, you know, eight is not a totally abnormal fence height.
I know we've granted waivers for eight foot fences in the not distant past, but I can, we have different, you know, powers when it's a solar project versus a highway business. So like, I, I don't know for sure that we can do it here, but I think that makes sense if we can.
And if you don't mind asking for clarification, the site plan, I think we covered this a while ago, but my understanding of the site plan is that it is a, uh, a vinyl fence with, with arborvitae's adjacent to it. Wasn't that how the site plan shows? And so, so it's really not that it wasn't existent. It was just, I guess the request is to go taller with the fence. But it is a fence in arborvitae, right? Along that property line?
Correct. And at, going back to the supplemental packet that was provided on October 8th, 2020. There was a number three under architectural. Our response is that currently an eight foot PVC stockade fence with plantings is proposed to be installed on the western boundary.
All right.
So it sounds like we're already there.
I think we might already be there. I do recall a little bit of back and forth in my head about it though. So just give me one more second to look at the response.
Yeah, I think we need to know because if the, if the zoning is six and it's eight, we need to, we need to waiver it explicitly.
Here we go. I have it. So, um,
Yeah.
It's number, under five landscape standards on the, in the same packet that we provided, B. Uh, current set of revised plans show an eight foot PVC stockade fence to be installed on the western boundary. The board can either accept this height or condition the project to reduce the height of the fence to six feet per the fencing standards of East Hampton zoning section 6.53.
Okay. So that would be a waiver, but we could do that.
We need to make sure it's in our draft. Okay.
And then in addition, 35 arborvitae will be planted along this western boundary for additional screening. The planting size will be four to six feet tall with a mature growth of 10 feet to 15 feet high and three to four feet wide.
So I would like to see, and you'll forgive me, it only says Jane's iPad, so I can't refer to hers as her last name because I don't know it, but Jane's, the, the information, the, the cutout, the, you know, tree, the, the, everything you're going to do, I would love to see like a letter or some sort of signed document so that we can act on that. Just saying.
Yeah, I think we could, we could create a condition, Jim, in the decision so that there, it, it has to, you know, we would, we could put in terms of sort of what kind of specimen tree and what kind of a, what do we call it, Jeff? A hammerhead in the driveway, like a construction to allow for turnaround? And then we can just make that a condition in there so that that would be an obligation of the applicant before they do it.
Yeah. And if in that condition, there was a requirement that we provide a plan suitable to the plan, to the planning board, we could certainly, that way it gets followed up with a plan based on the condition and you guys can take a look at it.
Okay, that'd be good. Curtis, did you have a comment or a question?
I also want to make sure that we're looking at 6.902, uh, where it says that where the, where required yard setbacks are not violated by a fence, the fence shall not exceed eight feet in height. So hypothetically, the, um, the height restrictions are a little bit different when you don't have them set in the front yard setback. However, that's also under the portion that's specific to residential districts and also specific to, um, to side yard setbacks. So I'm not confident it applies to everything here.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
I apologize. It's, it's the one, something that Curtis just said made me wonder about the. Um, I apologize, it's it's the one, something that Curtis just said made me wonder about the site plan and that that fence coming along that property line. Are we, are we, have has it been looked at for line of sight as you're leaving the Duncan driveway and looking into town, like looking right? Is it, is it setback far enough that you can get to the I see Rob, I just want to check to make sure that if we are talking about an eight foot fence, it doesn't extend all the way to the end of the driveway such that it blocks the line of sight. So once that's checked, that would be good. And and then again, I apologize, but I wanted to check, I thought that the email um, that was submitted today asked for the fence in arborvitae prior to construction. So I just wanted to vet that real quick, because that's not, I think that email was asking for that fence and shrubs to go up at prior at construction start. And so that's different than what we might expect, which is that comes in at the end. So did we talk about that at a prior meeting? Do you think that that's something that's feasible?
We didn't, we didn't talk about that timing, and I would think just, uh, Rob, I'll get to you. I mean, my my gut would be that I think that the plantings usually don't make much sense that early, but maybe the fence is still feasible at the beginning. But um, Rob, what do you think about that?
Um, I think it doesn't make sense. Unfortunately, typically during construction, I see that the landscaping, anything that would be put in would probably get, especially with arborvitae, they're subject to be getting damaged. Um, I think certainly prior to occupancy, you know, so that, you know, there's screening, but prior to the construct, the rest of the site construction, there's gonna be a lot of activity there.
What what about, Rob, we've done for like solar projects, construction screening and stuff like that, so it's temporary, but it it still does a good job with the light and the sound and that kind of thing. Would you be agreeable to putting something temporary up prior to construction and then obviously putting up the nicer fence in arborvitae afterwards?
Yeah, the the temporary fence that I typically see and the prep pass sites that Manny has done, I believe that the site contractor would put the like a chain link up that has, and they can put fabric on it.
Yeah.
Hide things during construction. It's probably not gonna, you know, it's gonna not, the noise will probably come through it regardless, but at least at least it won't be as bad to look at. You can kind of see the fabric versus the what's going on on site.
Yeah, I think that might be as good as, I mean, I think that's gonna be a tough spot during that time. I mean, it's just, there's no real way around that. She's right there on the line. But I think whatever we can do for sort of a good sound baffling and and site obstruction during the construction would probably be good.
And then communication goes a long way. I know Manny's approach is typically to communicate with the neighbors and as he, you know, is up there, he's quite involved in the construction process as well. So I think, you know, not only good fences make good neighbors, but also good neighbors make good projects. So.
Yeah.
Jesse, this is good conversation. I think, can I just clarify? Because I I am wondering if Ms. Sexton reviews the recording and and watches this. I think the chain link with fabric would be a very good visual block, right? But I don't think it's gonna do anything to mitigate sound. So I just want to be clear that we may not be able to, we may not be able to mitigate sound um, during construction, but I think the visual is is what I heard could be worked on. I just want to be clear, because I don't want anyone to have an expectation that like the chain link with fabric would stop a lot of sound, right? Or I just want to.
There is something we've used on those, um, I'm specifically thinking about some of the solar projects when the trucks are coming in and out during construction. And like I said, I don't think anything is gonna be a hundred percent. You're gonna be next to a construction site for a few months, but um, I I think there's sort of a version of that fabric covering that does a better job at the noise than some of the just the dust mitigation cloth.
If I could through the chair, I think, um, you know, these guys are gonna have to, any construction that happens, they're gonna have to adhere to the noise ordinance. Um, they're gonna have to adhere to the hours of operation that are either put on the special permit and even construction hours of operation, I should say. Um, so, you know, and and they don't want to cause problems for the neighbors. Uh, you know, one, obviously dust control is a big thing. Um, I would be more more worried about dust control um than I would um, noise. I think noise, you know, people are used to, you know, there's a lot of vehicles that are gonna be traveling on the road. Um, it's actually kind of fun to watch these be built. Um, so I think the, but but remember, we have a we have a multi-story house directly adjacent to it. So even anything we do, you know, the noise is gonna travel a little bit above the fence. So I think, I think visual, I think we can really take care of, but um I would be realistic in saying that I don't think the noise, I think if we handle that more in a condition about uh, time of, you know, start in the morning and not on the weekends, which I think is already in your ordinance as well.
Yep, that sounds good. Um, any other comments or questions for members of the public? Uh, again, you can either raise your Zoom hand or turn your camera on and raise your hand. Um, or if you're on your phone, star six, I think raises your hand, or star nine, and the other one unmutes you. All right, any other comments or questions from planning board members or planning department? So what what I'm imagining here, um, everyone is that we would, I I think we've sort of done a good job with these conditions, and I think it probably makes sense to um, have the planning department draft a draft decision with conditions that we've discussed um, to just to review and vote on at the next meeting. My only question, I guess, for planning department and um planning board is, I think um, you know, I think one of the key things here is sort of figuring out the language for that funding requirement that Rob and I were talking about when we get to that point in our return, and I'm wondering if there would be a benefit to having Fussin O'Neal help the planning department with that language and that process to get that drafted or not. Um, Jeff, do you think that would be helpful? Or I I think we've run out of funding, so I think part of this would be asking the applicant to kick in a little more for that review, or do we think we're confident enough in how this is gonna go that we can handle this internally?
I guess, I'll take it for a stab at that. I mean, if if the applicant is agreeable, so you know, the the cover letter mentioned certificate of occupancy, and I just wanna, I what I heard Mr. Levek say is that we would want to have a kind of some kind of condition that would prevent a building permit from being issued until until that that whatever the appropriate description of that funding is is in place. Right? As as long as we're okay with that premise, then I think I would be okay potentially working with the applicant to make sure that the language does what we all are expected to do. But I just want to be clear that it would be with, you know, the building permit would be delayed for a period of time until which the funding is secured somehow. Then the the construction of the Duncan could occur, and we would be on some kind of timeline with the intersection. And then I think the the condition would be also that there shall be no certificate of occupancy until the light is like is functional.
I think that's what Rob, what Rob and I discussed.
Okay.
Does that make sense to you? Yeah, okay, so I think that that's right. At some point, we'll have an idea of the cost and then we'll require funding for them to get a building permit and construct, and then once they can flip the switch, then they can get a C L.
Yep, and then while we're talking about this is, you know, if we'd have to be kind of base it on the information we have now, which is that preliminary signal plan. And, you know, it's it's very common for conditions to say that if there are any, you know, changes that they would come back to the board and the board's responsibility at that level is to determine if they're minor and which the board can treat it like it's business and just just address the change, or if it's something significant, then, you know, the board has to decide whether they would require a modification of the of the special permit, which is a which is a public hearing process. So we will need to have enough, we'll need to have a little bit of that in this decision to make sure that should something change significantly, that we we need to, the planning board needs to understand what the change is and make a decision whether it would be renotification to a butters and restarting any of the process. So I think.
Yeah, I think if we have language, Jeff, that's like, you know, construction is like substantially in accordance with the plans. I mean, we know that this very well isn't gonna be exactly how it looks. But if they move the pole three feet to the left, we don't really care. But if they, you know, get rid of the intersect or the crosswalk or something, then that's probably something that we want to look at. So like, I think I think we can probably put in some of our standard language on that with the understanding that most of the tweaks will be minor. And, you know, if they decide they want to go with a roundabout, they'll come back.
Yep, and then just in terms of framing a decision, um, the other import, like there, all the considerations are important, so I'm not trying to totally prioritize them, but the design. So last time, the building exterior was was presented, and there are, I think there's two sections specifically in the zoning that that talk about the need to make the design compatible. Do do any of the board members have any concerns with at least seeing a draft that would acknowledge that the design does meet the the basic, you know, compatibility criteria, because we we did talk about that last time, but as I go away and maybe with some help from Curtis and we draft something, I just want to make sure that we had a nod in the in the direction to show you a draft that that says that the design was in was good in terms of compatibility with the neighborhood and things like that. So I just wanted to cover that before we move on.
I think we had, we had agreed at a prior meeting that the the designs they had presented were were acceptable, and we'd sort of moved on to just the traffic issues to resolve. But if there's planning board members who feel differently, they can speak now. That looks good. So I I think that that was acceptable. And then the only other thing, I think what might be helpful is, um, Rob, and and I don't know if we want to do this for the next meeting or you put it out a month, I guess it'll depend on how much time people need to put together the decision or get other stuff together. But if we can come up with some sort of um, I guess rough proposal of what the the mitigation we've just talked about with the butters and the across the street neighbors, so that we can have something to reference. Um, and I mean, if we have to, we can, um, we can craft a a condition just based on what we've talked about tonight, but it might be easier if you have time to confirm either with Jane or Ms. Sexton or whoever about sort of the specifics, so that we know that that's what's gonna be in there. And if you can't, and like I said, we can do a general condition about that, but that might be helpful just to cross Ts and dot Is.
We're happy to do that, and I think I can speak for Mr. Sardina that he'd probably be happy to meet with, um, and I forget her last name, but Ms. With Jane.
Yeah. Okay, um, and I, I think that was it as far as mitigation for a butters. I think there was a planting plan already for some of the other screening on site, but I don't think there were any other individual neighbors that were um issues that needed to be resolved. Um, so I I I think that sets us up. So then I guess I'll ask Jeff and Rob, I mean, do, and I guess also Curtis about what we have on for the sixteenth right now. If we want to do this on the sixteenth or if we want to do it on the first one in April.
Rob, you had seemed agreeable to drafting a plan to show the mitigation on the property across the street. Do you need an abundant amount of time to do that, or is that a quick thing?
No, I'll defer to you on what what's appropriate for your timing. Um, we can, we can certainly accommodate the next meeting, but we don't want to put any undue pressure on on your office. I know we got a million things going on, so.
Robin Jeff.
If I could just, this is Benny, uh, Manny Sardino. Good evening, everyone. If I could just uh say something about the neighbor across the street, um. I mean, you could do, you could put it in writing if you want to, but I'm actually thinking about it, and I'll probably stop by her house tomorrow and um to talk to her and figure out exactly what she has in mind to do and and and, you know, and talk to someone to do to do their, um. You know, I just realized when you pull it on the Google Maps that she was backing out of her driveway, and that's not safe. Even if Duncan wouldn't go there. Because, um, as you know, that the street is busy, backing out of the driveway, that's suicidal. As as she, you know, as you get older and stuff, you reflexes and everything. So I'm gonna be stopping by and talking to her tomorrow. And um, and also have a contractor stop by and give me a coat to put a way for her to back to to turn around in her driveway. So.
Okay, that that's great, Mr. Sardino. Thank you for that.
Um, so I would expect the applicant to say that sooner is better to so because you have a lot of balls to start rolling with the Massey. I mean, I'm willing to commit to working with Curtis and try to turn around a decision for the next meeting, which will be March sixteenth. Curtis, I don't think we have anything else on the agenda for that meeting.
As of yet, the only thing we have is the concurrent ordinance review process that we're gonna be discussing later this evening, and I don't know what the timeline looks. I don't know whether City Council is expecting a response within this time period, but this would probably take our bandwidth associated with that review as well.
Yeah, I mean.
Which I'm fine with, I just present as commentary.
I guess my caveat would be that this this has um had many, many meetings, so.
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah, all right, great, great. I'm delighted to be overruled. Devil's advocate on it.
I guess what I was gonna say is I I might skip, so the decision typically comes with some narrative describing each session. Um, I think I would need to skip most of that and focus on the zoning ordinance finding sections and then the conditions. So I I that is manageable, just knowing that some of the narrative, you know, might need to come before the decision is actually signed or, you know, made official, but.
Do you want me to do the narrative portion and then you can do the actual meat and potatoes?
Um, we can talk, we can talk offline, but yeah, I think, um.
Yeah, you're right, Jeff. So so Jeff, what we really need to vote on is the findings and conditions. So if we focus on that and have that together and the applicant can review that, then the part that sort of outlines what has happened at these many, many hearings is not an essential part of what we actually vote on. So I think you're right that we can focus on that and and hopefully get this done on the sixteenth.
Okay. I think we should aim for that. If that's, I mean, it's, I I just want the applicant to know that that's that's a lot, it's it's a bit of work uh, between that. It's only, it's not that much time. But yeah, we were, I'm willing to make that a priority if that helps the applicant kind of move this whole project forward. So um, I think that's, that would be my recommendation is have the board continue it to March sixteenth, so we can pick that up and review the draft.
I motion, can you, the special permit for American Dream Real T L L C uh, for the development of a Dunkin' Donuts until March sixteenth?
Anybody want to second that?
I'm sorry, I was on mute. I'll second.
Oh, you just caught Austin, he was just about.
Oh, sorry.
All right, uh, I'm going to continue until March sixteenth. Uh, Jim.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
Austin.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
And I am an I. All right, folks, so we will see you in a couple of weeks. Thanks again for your help with this, everybody.
Thank you, and thanks to Jeff for working on that. Thanks.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, have a good night, folks.
Great, thank you.
Okay, moving right along, we only have one other item on the agenda is the proposed amendment to the solar bylaw. So I don't know where we are with that. But someone can tell me.
Um, I mean, so the the planning board and ordinance held the joint public hearing um, a couple of weeks ago, and I think it, everyone was there. I mean, I think it was discussed and and ordinance was agreeable to kind of stepping back for a little while and letting kind of us, like collectively us, look at the whole solar ordinance as as a as an entirety, because I think it's gonna make more sense. Um, I asked, Curtis and I talked, and we wanted to put it on the agenda just to have a quick discussion with the board, you know, from the board members who have dealt with large scale solar over the past couple of years, and then the River Valley Co-op Solar. Are there any things or components that, that was what I wanted to ask, are there any things or components in this that you would like to see come, start to come forward in the draft? Um, there's a couple.
Jeff, I had a couple of things that I have been thinking of, and I think I mentioned some to you, but one is sort of the idea, like with the co-op that the, um, where the the solar is not the primary purpose, right? So it's not a residential solar, but it's also not a commercial solar. And sort of if that should have a different process, um, and the other was sort of how we handle, I think we've run into problems a couple of times about not quite having the teeth we want when it comes to the tree removal and the tree clearing. And with the possibility even of a look back, because I know we've had some problems in East Hampton, that people may be clearing land before they even apply. And then we don't really have any way to make them mitigate. So those are the two things that I was thinking of, that that kind of I've wished we had. Um, and other than that, I think there might be some ways to clean up the language on the bond. Um, where I think we've also sort of not run into problems, but kind of had some vagueness that maybe some extra clarity would give us a little more tools in our toolbox. Jim?
I was gonna bring up that bond thing as well. It's often come to us in a lot of debate about, you know, who we're going to have to talk to, who, you know, how the check is gonna be, and we've had lengthy conversations and all the nitty gritty and that. I'm not really sure that goes into zoning. Um, so it's kind of a difficult thing, you know, it might be just a planning process that knows that. Yeah, and and I I had a couple of things as well, but I I really don't know that there are things that go into the zoning. I'm just gonna say them because they're things that are in my mind, but I I'm not quite sure they, you know, zoning should be succinct and just about zoning. Um, but I I definitely know we've come up again and again and again with this, um, with uh trail access on these projects a lot.
Yeah.
And and it's always a fight. It's always about, we'll give you this if you give us this, you know, I don't know, fight isn't a good, a negotiation might be a better way to to put that. But if there was something in our zoning that sort of incentivized that, or maybe again, not in the zoning, but but something that really kind of made it easier for that process, because they often have trailhead. Um, and then, of course, um, decommissioning is sort of a big deal. I I think it's already in the zoning, but just making. I, I think it's already in the zoning, but just making sure that we, we take a good look at that to make sure it's clean and easy. We're, we're almost always looking to, a, a, as a city, make sure that, you know, we're not leaving malignant blight behind. Uh, and I, I've noticed that we tend to go for the maximum on these things. And the biggest flaw that we have is really about the valuation and trusting the valuation that the developers give us. And, and so for me, that's kind of always like the point of, you know, how do we come out with that number? And we always end up saying, you know, we're, we're not experts on this because we're not, and we really can't be the ones to come up with this evaluation. So something about like how we vet what they give us. Anyway, those are my thoughts.
That's good. The, the trail access is great, Jim, because I think you're right. We've sort of tried to shoehorn that into the tree removal where it's, you know, well, if we're going to let you do tree removal, but I think the bylaw really focuses on replacement planting and not other accommodations, which I think if we had some language in there to just make it a little clearer that like we can sort of pair those things together, I think that might be helpful. Harry?
Are we talking about, uh, just solar farms themselves or a new solar consideration on top of, uh, apartment buildings and things like that? What are we talking here?
Well, so I, I think that this is still a part of the proposal that's pending about the, the certain projects that require, at least the draft has a requirement for solar. But I think when we had that hearing last time, we sort of went down this path and talked about how the whole solar bylaw really needs to be revised. So I think what this draft would do when it's done is address three different, maybe four different situations. Like one is someone wants to put a solar panel on their roof or in their backyard, residential. Two is the other end of the spectrum, you know, a 20 acre solar farm. And then I think three would be the projects that might require solar or there's an incentive to add solar. And the fourth would be what I was talking about with the co-op, like the idea of a project that it's not the focal point, but they want to add solar. And do we treat that differently or not? And I'm not sure if we want to or not, but it felt, I remember feeling tedious with the River Valley Co-op where in addition to this large scale project, we sort of changed gears and went under our solar bylaw for the stuff in the parking lot on the roof, which felt kind of like overkill. But it's going to be a pretty big project for solar out there too. So I don't know. Maybe we, maybe we just do it that way, but it, it probably should be clarified that that's how we would handle it anyway.
If, if solar is required, say, say if we pass a law that says solar is required on a building, okay? Who's going to make that, to make that decision, whether it's going to be feasible or not? I mean, who, who's, where's the bottom line here? Is it the Lincoln Specter or who would it be?
Yeah. So I think that narrow issue, which is what came to us at that last hearing is sort of set aside for now. I think we need to hammer that out with ordinance. But I think what we're trying to do is create a whole new solar bylaw that that will fit into a part of. And whether it'll be a requirement and how it'll be analyzed and whether it be incentivized instead of required. I think all that we still need to deal with, but I think that's going to be a very, very small part of our general city solar bylaw. I think you're right. There's some serious questions about how you would institute a requirement and when you would institute it and who would make that determination and, and what those impacts may be. We, we definitely need to go down that road at some point.
Just to be clear, the way that it was proposed was that it would be the planning board. Um, based on, based on an analysis that the applicant would have to submit along with the project. So, you know, that we didn't even get that far to understand what, how, how, what, how the planning board would deal with that. But that's, that's the way it was proposed. So I think that's, that's one of the biggest fundamental questions, I think, that we'll grapple with a little bit is can we incentivize it by making it as easy as possible to get the permit? And that's an incentive or are we like, is there a real commitment to require, to require it? And, um, part of what the exercise will be there, Harry, is, you know, the, the language was really just taken from Watertown and just put into a packet. And Watertown is a much different community than East Hampton. I, I looked at some of the development projects that they have underway and you're talking like a 300,000 square foot manufacturing building and multiple five-story residential buildings popping up everywhere. Whereas we have some growth, but we do not have like that level of growth. So, um, that's going to be a conversation between the planning board and ordinance. But I think it'll all come together, hopefully, once we put it, put it back together. So, uh, I'll, I'll yield my time now for.
Yeah, Curtis?
I also wanted to speak to that. So something I was trying to pull together for the planning board and ultimately didn't have a lot of success and finishing to a level that I wanted to bring to the board. Was this table of what other solar ordinances have been created kind of in the latter half of 2020 in preparation for the updated state guidance, uh, for SMART two. The, for, for, which is currently in draft form with the comment period closing this Friday. Um, so there's a couple of different municipalities that have updated their ordinances and you see the, the only analysis I could provide is that I know that Boston and I think Somerville are also considering mandatory solar with projects of a certain scale. Whereas otherwise there are just solar ordinances of the type that you see in East Hampton where it's meant to govern a particular kind of project rather than to mandate a particular kind of energy source. Um, and my interpretation of that is that Boston has a very hot housing market and can, and can and should um, incentivize developers to, to pony up those efforts, especially. Boston is also, uh, saying that one of the major things that they've had is that you've had institutional partners in the universities who have put to practice a lot of the stuff they've said in Boston's environment. And therefore they can point to developers who have already succeeded in these strategies. Um, and then say, well, they could do it, so can you.
Yeah, I think that kind of analysis would be helpful, Curtis. I know it's a lot of work, but I think it is interesting to see what other places are doing and trying to find places that look and feel a little more like East Hampton. I was telling Jeff, you know, some of the towns that I've done work for on solar bylaws and drafting solar bylaws are rural farm communities. And that's just as inapplicable as Boston is to East Hampton, you know, it doesn't.
Right. I'm try, I'm trying to boil it down to like their standard, the standard things that we see included. Um, just to provide the board ammunition and what they want to include, but a lot of the things truly are standard. A lot of these solar ordinances include decommissioning, bonds for performance, those bonds are 125%. Um, you know, uh, a, uh, availability review by third party that the board can hire and make the applicant pay for. Uh, all that stuff. The biggest difference is the philosophical difference that you see in Watertown, Boston and potentially Somerville, although I only know that one with River Mill, which is where those are hot housing markets where they, or well, hot development markets for large, where they can kind of incentivize projects to follow, um, stricter guidelines.
All right. Yeah, Jeff?
Just two more quick things. So, um, you know, I think, I think the, the mistake that I made was thinking that um, we could kind of pull this up, this, this other revision together and meet, meet the, the ongoing one for April 13th. I don't know what I was thinking. Uh, it's going to take us a while to draft sort of the comprehensive review, uh, the proposal. And then that gets sent to the city council. It has to go back to ordinance. Then, then it has to get advertised as a public hearing with both, with both groups. So that's what I have to do. I, I want to reach back out to the ordinance subcommittee and let them know that I, I think we're talking a little bit longer duration to, to really make this comprehensive. And so I just want to make sure that they're understanding that and agreeable.
So we'll have to talk with them on the 16th about whether they want to keep pushing forward with this discrete issue or if they want to, if we want to slow that down a little bit so we can do it as part of a global solar bylaw.
Yeah, that was the only thing I had a question with Curtis. I don't recall having them coming back on March 16th. I, I thought we continued it to April 13th.
No, and that's, that, I didn't know, you're absolutely right there. When I was speaking earlier about, um, potentially having an agenda item in March. My thought was that maybe the board would still be discussing some ordinance change in preparation.
Okay. So I have a little bit of like work to do. Just make sure that ordinance knows that we're, we're, we want to do this as a comprehensive piece. It's just going to take longer. And then the other thing that's just important, and I want to reiterate this to ordinance as well, is that as we embark on this idea of updating our solar ordinance, we're, we, you know, we are, we could get a proposal. Um, and that proposal would not be subject to things we might be discussing. You know, I think there's some, it's tricky state law, but you know, you know, like if we're talking about a tree removal, look back or North Hampton has a fee. So if you, if they do need to remove trees, they have a, they, they have a fee. So we have a little, we have a couple of discussion pieces that we want to bring forward, but that wouldn't be applicable if we get a project in the meantime. Um, and the only real alternative to, to stop that is a moratorium. But, you know, I just don't know if we're in that position to, to go through it, because it's a separate zoning amendment. So it has to go through the whole zoning process to issue a moratorium. I just wanted to be clear that, you know, we could get a project that.
A moratorium would be contraindicated to the incentivization we're trying to do.
Yeah. The, the caveat would be that you could, you could put a moratorium on a certain type. But right now our zoning is not, it doesn't have great definitions. So we might, we might, we don't want to prevent a solar project from coming forward, but we just have to be aware that i- if it takes us six months, you know, to do this, um, we could get a project. I just, I just want to be clear that, that, that could happen. But. All right. Um, I, that was helpful. I just wanted to have, you know, on the agenda so we could discuss it. So it gives Curtis and I a little bit of guidance and rails, like where to.
Yeah. One of the, one of the things I want to put bluntly is that like, you know, Jeff and I both kind of worked on different things. And one of the things, um, uh, the, the analytical tool I'm working on may be irrelevant. You know what I mean? Like, uh, the, the perspective it's taking is saying, you know, like here's what these other towns have, here's what East Hampton has by contrast, whereas we're already kind of on a fine-grained analysis of what our future ordinance might contain, rather than merely saying, do we want a bond? We already determined that on the basis of our extent, um, zoning ordinance. So, you know, uh, as staff, I'm just working on trying to hit the moving target that we're working on here.
Should we keep this on the agenda?
We could probably keep it on the agenda, although if, if we're going to be doing the Dunkin' one between now and next meeting, that'll probably be the focus probably for, for next week, but.
Yeah, we can just pass it if it's on the agenda too.
Yep. Yep. That makes sense.
Um, I do just want to, we do have some members of the public that are still here. So if anybody from the public has any comments or questions about this process, you can raise your hand or at this point unmute and ask. All right. I don't see anything. So, um, all right. So I guess, Jeff, did that give you enough information to get running?
Yeah, that was very helpful. Thanks.
All right. Excellent. So another productive night, folks. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Austin, want to go for it?
I do. Um, uh, mo- motion to, you made the motion or, or I made?
Motion, Austin.
Uh, motion to, um, uh, adjourn the meeting and then, um, what is my added language now?
That's it.
Sure. You want to, Harry, you want a second bet?
I'll second that.
This is bullying. I won't accept this.
All right. So voting on the motion to adjourn. Jim?
Hi.
Austin?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
And I am an I. Thank you all very much. Have a good one.
Thank you. Take care.